Done, vote is carried. If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna request a five-minute break. We've been a couple hours and I got a feeling the next topic may be a lengthy one. If the council will indulge.
Again, as everybody who would be against a five-minute break seen none, Mr. Lamar, if you could post accordingly, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Item 11.2 is a memo from the Director of Public Works regarding the on-demand transit results. And I have an action recommended here. The action recommended that council direct staff to implement a fully-on-demand transit service, which is option one of the on-demand transit pilot results report. And further, that council approve the purchase of two small R-8-metre specialty vehicles, type B from the report, at an approximate cost of $160,000 each, for a total cost of $320,000, with the total municipal contribution of $85,344, which is 26.67% of the cost. And through metro lengths, monitor the possibility of purchasing a hybrid version of the type D vehicle. And further, that council approve ending the hours of operation at 9:00 PM, a reduction of one hour for an approximate savings of $20,000 annually. That's option, that's option one in the report. And further, that council approve reducing the call center operating hours to match the operating hours of Century Transportation for a savings of approximately $29,000 annually. And that is option three, pardon me, option two from the report. And further, that council authorize staff to renegotiate the transit operations contract with the current provider for the remaining two years to realign contract fees with the approved transit service option and vehicle types that is not to exceed the 2023-2024 fees of the current contract. So I'll open the floor to discussion at this time. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Darling. Motion makes sense. Do we know how long this will be ongoing for foreseeable future, your motion? You're not putting an end date to sort of review the results of what you're putting forward? Okay. I guess the question I had is, we've read quite often on social media that there's a lack of drivers. And is that just between the 9:00 and the 10:00 o'clock service, maybe Director Wills? Or do you foresee that that will be an ongoing issue going forward with the lack of drivers?
Director Wills?
Through the chair, Deputy Mayor. I believe this is, I may call on Renee to help me with the answer, but I believe this was due to a licensing backup because of COVID. The licensing offices were very far behind in keeping up with having our bus drivers get their licenses renewed. So that was a lot of the issue. And then we, there would just happen to be a few drivers that had various reasons for being off work at Century Transportation. And it is a difficult industry to attract and retain employees, but I think that we sort of had a compounding issue there for a while. But I don't foresee it being an ongoing, long-term problem moving forward as a result of this on-demand pilot.
Yes, and the actual reduction from the 9:00 to 10:00 was based on a savings of $20,000 because of the number of rides at a cost of approximately $46 per ride, which is a little excessive, but councillor Bureau. Director Wills?
Through the chair to councillor Bureau. I don't see why we couldn't do it. I hadn't thought about this as of yet, but I guess my main concern is that it's been a year and haven't received an awful lot of feedback already throughout a whole year. Regardless if there's an active public consultation process or survey ongoing, we haven't had a lot of feedback from people who don't want the service. We've been actively trying for those that haven't been able to figure it out or don't want to try. We were trying to keep communicating with them how to do it and how they can get used to doing it. But what concerned us a lot with the 16 people within the survey, they had a whole year to try it and they still didn't try it. So it's getting people out there to continue to try it, to actually have an opinion versus just not trying it at all and having an opinion that they won't like it when they haven't tried it yet. That's, and again, that's only 16 of the whole, of the, I think there were 78 people that responded. So I'm not sure that the result would be any different in six months' time because it's already been a year and we still haven't had a majority of, the majority of the feedback has been good. Not, then the minority is very small that don't like it and a lot of them that don't like it haven't even tried it yet. Makes sense? So it's not that we couldn't extend it for another six months. I'm just not sure that after a year you would see much of a different result than what we have now.
Thank you, Director Wills. Councillor Beatty?
Thank you, councillor Darling. Through you too, Director Wills. On that theme of educating people and supporting people on how to use and how to access the service, I'm not opposed to the reduction from 10:00 PM to 9:00 PM. But if we were to reduce the call center hours to align with the hours of operations of Century Transportation, how would we envision supporting folks on the evening rides who don't have access to the app or the website? Or people who are still learning how to onboard the service, so that the phone-in option? Would we be completely overlooking the evening time riders?
Through the chair to councillor Beatty. I don't believe so. Again, it's a learning curve that we're still working through where the booking in advance is really important. And I feel fairly confident that our ridership will get up to speed with this because we've gone through it already with our Wheels membership. So from the beginning of when Wheels was first offered, there was always that requirement to book at least a day in advance. And the call-in service was only offered Monday to Friday, not on weekends and during office hours, about, you know, 7:00 to 4:00 or 5:00 or 8:00 to 5:00-ish. So we've always had that system in place for a portion of our ridership. And it's just that transition period that takes some time to understand that you have to call during regular business hours for booking a ride and for your return ride. So yes, it does, I'm sure there will be a few times that people are very frustrated because they call and they can't get their time. But we learn from that lesson and learn to book further in advance to ensure they get their ride time, for one, booking in advance, and ensure that they book their ride time by phone during regular hours if they can't use the app or the computer, the web-based program during office, during outside of hours.
Thank you, Director Wills. Does that answer your question, councillor Beatty? Thank you, Mayor Henderson.
Thank you, Chair. I do support your motion before us on the screen. I hope and trust will build us to both efficiency and effectiveness. I have felt for some time that our 30-foot buses look great. But when I look at them and I'm walking my dog, there aren't a lot of people on them. And I like to believe with the new app and the use and the educational model that the public will adapt. We can go down close to your site or your location and it will be a far more effective and, I'm hoping, cost-service-type model. If I'm concerned and you come back again, Director Wills, and tell us, well, this part isn't working as well as it should, then I believe you will bring that information back to us well in time for councillor Darling yourself prior to the other budget so we can bring in some items if it meets a new standard. But at this point in time, I fully support the recommendations. And I think it also proves how progressive this council has been because remember, this is new to our community and I think we're, what, in our second year at best? And we're joining a lot of communities, not just in Ontario, but in Alberta. And again, if you track those communities, they're having tremendous success as well. So I just want to congratulate the work you put into this.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson. Councillor Chorley?
Councillor Darling, I think you've captured a very good way forward. There's a lot of options in this report. And thank you, Director Wills. It's a very comprehensive report. My only question is similar to councillor Beatty's question. I still have some hesitancy about reducing the call center operating hours. My concern is that, again, citizens who do not have access to a cell phone who want to order a ride home. And I really feel that to make this system work, we need to be able to offer a phone number where people can call and book a ride as long as the service is in operation. So just to clarify, the motion says that outside of Century's operating hours, so that would go until 7:30 at night, is that right, Director Wills?
Through the chair to councillor Chorley. Outside of Century's operating hours, currently we have the call center from 5:00 until 10:00. That's provided by the Calgary Call Center, PWT's. There is the option, as I noted in my summary, that you could reduce that to 7:30 to save a little bit of cost there because ridership tends to drop off after 7:30. But going till that extra hour and a half, if we do reduce it to 9:00, is not a significant savings, of course, but there is several options there.
I'm sorry, go ahead, councillor Chorley.
Sorry, I just want to make sure that I understand the motion on the floor very clearly. So this is proposing that there would be no phone number that citizens can call? This motion is saying from 5:00 o'clock, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
Yes, and along those lines, I think what Director Wills was saying is that we're trying to get people to book ahead. So I mean, if they can take a ride earlier in the day, they're gonna have to call earlier to say what time they want to get picked up. But at that time, they should be, you know, saying what time they want to come home to. So that's, I have a question myself, I don't see any answer at this time. I was just referencing the, what did you call it? Allowed, allowable failed searches. And I was comparing them to something like a person waiting at a bus stop in the city and the bus comes along, but it's full or three-quarters full, three or four people get on and the driver says, "We're full." And you have to stand there and wait. Like, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get that bus at the time you're there or whatnot. So by these allowable failed searches, we're having a percentage where we know there will be capacity times and if somebody phones at that time, they're just gonna have to rearrange their schedule to maybe fit, you know, the capacity limits, is that correct?
Yes, that is definitely correct. There's a, there's a fine balance between how many rides we can afford to turn down before it becomes detrimental to the service. But also, yeah, allowing every single ride to book would mean we could have, you know, six vehicles on, which isn't cost-effective. So there is that balance of, is three the right number? And 15% of ride declines during the high demand period? Or is it less than 10 and that's our, that would be our KPI moving forward is managing? What is, what is an acceptable limit of declined rides before we start seeing, you know, ridership maybe isn't growing or we're losing rides, riderships, or we're getting more and more declines? But also, when you get those ride decline times, again, it's another learning curve for riders to understand that, oh yeah, yesterday when I called at 10:00, I couldn't get a ride. And the day before, when I called at 11:00, I couldn't get a ride. So I'm gonna call the night before to get that ride at 10:00, the day or two or a week before, just to try and plan further in advance if you really need that ride during peak demand periods.
Thank you, Director Wills. The reason I wanted to confirm that is the first time I tried to use the service myself. I got a failed. I phoned in the morning, my wife and I were gonna go somewhere in the afternoon. And I thought, well, let's do the transit, let's try it. And so I called and I said, "Sorry, but we're full at that time." So I realized the next time I used it, I booked a day in advance and was quite pleased with, you know. I used the app and we took the ride from our home to the hospital to visit my brother-in-law. And we picked up another rider, had a nice chat with him from LS8. He dropped off them all, we dropped off the hospital. So it was, it was very good, councillor Bureau. Well, I think that's why we're, the line, like, as the report says, purchasing two more buses, so we have three, oh, sorry. Go ahead, councillor Beatty, sorry, don't see your hand there.
Thank you, councillor Darling. Could you oppose the motion back up, please, Mr. Lamar?
Councillor Darling, I'm in full support of your recommendation, but I do have a recommended amendment. And that would just be to strike out the one paragraph, further that council approve reducing the call center operating hours. And my thought behind that is I appreciate trying to get folks to book ahead of time. But as we evolve into an on-demand transit culture, one would like to think that life reflects, that the transit on-demand reflects on-demand life. And for folks after that 5:00 PM who might need to run to the grocery store, might need to go to the hospital, get home from work, whatever their life situation may be. I'm just empathetic to the fact that some folks still might need that call center support after 5:00 PM, even if it was for another year until our community fully onboards this. So yeah, I'm full supportive of it, but I am apprehensive about reducing the call center operating hours to 5:00 PM at this time. So I would like to make a notice to amend that we just strike out that one paragraph, further that council approve reducing the call center operating hours.
Okay, councillor Beatty, any further comments on councillor Beatty's amendment? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Do we have, I guess I'll vote for Director Wills on this. Do we have any idea of the volume of calls at the call center? And I mean, there's still that two-hour time difference. If Calgary is actually taking these calls, do we have any idea of what that, what that volume is before we vote on whether to cancel that call center part of the motion after 5:00 PM?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor. I may ask Renee if she knows, and I'm putting her on the spot. We may have to get back to you on that as far as, we do keep track of them, so those stats are available. But Renee, any chance, do you know?
Welcome to the mic, Miss Champagne.
To the Deputy Mayor. Bulk of our calls come through during daytime hours. That's not saying that the call center doesn't send any calls they use, but I would have to, but the bulk is definitely from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Councillor Burkin?
Thank you, councillor Darling. Through you to staff member that can answer. The call center, you said that's through Century or the parent company? And do we have a contract currently that we have to use that as the call center? Or is that just added on because of the on-demand at the moment?
Through the chair to councillor Burket. That's part of our on-demand contract to utilize PWT being the parent company of Century. So Century does their office hours with people here in Waldenport-Hope. And then PWT's based out of Calgary. So they, they have a call center for all of their on-demand services across the country that we're utilizing on an hourly basis for the on-demand pilot. So there could potentially be a different contract for a call center if that's what you're alluding to in the future.
Follow-up, councillor Burket?
Yeah, and I think there's, just based on the cost, knowing after all hours, call services, as well as different technologies that could be used for that, I think there's a better way moving forward to do that piece of it per call basis or whatever, to still provide the citizens that after hours essentially, if Century's not doing it locally or whatever during their, their office hours. Because I think, I think that cost is a little high as far as what I know in other technologies that can be utilized to maybe adapt the system. So I could support keeping it in, but with maybe a little further exploring further options on how that could best be done.
Councillor Chorley?
I do appreciate councillor Beatty's amendment. I think that the primary concern I've heard with this transit system is how it will work for those citizens who do not have cell phones. So we have to make sure that we are providing other options. This is actually a topic that was raised in our Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And we just have to be careful that we aren't building any kind of socioeconomic bias into this system and that there is always an alternative for those without a cell phone. And I think for this system to work, any citizen should be able to have the opportunity to be spontaneous, not have to plan ahead to travel on public transit. If it's between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM, they should have the ability to just call someone and book a ride. So I do support removing this paragraph. But again, I, I think the rest of the motion is really strong.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, councillor Darling. Can I ask Director Wills? Currently, the call center takes calls from 8:00 AM to, what, 9:00 AM? Can you give me those hours?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor. It starts at 7:00 AM by Century and my, there wasn't actually an error in my report. My apologies, it did say 8:00 to 5:00, but it is 7:00 to 5:00 from Century. And then from 5:00 until 10:00 is PWT, the call center in Calgary, Monday to Friday.
And this additional $29,000 a year is just PWT then? It has nothing to do with Century? And we still don't know how many calls have been generated in that time period from 5:00 to 10:00. That's a, that's a good question, that's an important question. Perhaps we can answer that before next week's council meeting? If you could come up with that? Because that's really important before, we're only getting a couple calls a week or no calls. That makes a big, big decision. I know it's part of the transition for, you know, education and all that goes forward on this on-demand system. And the second question, if I can, councillor Darling. The, the contract with Century 21, or Century 21, Century Transportation is for two years. Councillor Bureau mentioned four years, but you're just gonna renew and basically consolidate the numbers for the following two years, right? You're not extending that, okay?
Yes, that's correct. We have a, our contract is three plus two, so there's that option to extend for two. So we're approaching that, that three-year mark right now. And just as a follow-up about the number of hours that PWT provides, it's about 30 hours a week of call service because there's some hours on the weekends that aren't covered as well. So that's probably, that's approximately the number of hours per week compared to that dollar value.
Councillor Beatty?
Thank you, councillor Darling. If I may, just one last comment to the amendment on the floor. And I appreciate councillor Chorley for bringing up the conversation from the EDI committee. And I appreciate that after 5:00 PM, we might have very, that ratio of the bulk during the daytime to the evening. But if we go back to the director's presentation earlier this evening, ideally as we onboard this across the community and if we continue to focus on the goal of increasing ridership, we need to continue that continuity in budgeting for all the additional support that comes around with increased ridership. And ideally, more folks in the evenings will start taking our on-demand transit service. So again, that's just an added case for my concern for deleting this support cost as high as it may be. Because once we take that out and if we're committed to increasing ridership and having to forecast long-term support for increased ridership, we would be removing this altogether versus maybe keeping it in for another year to see how that increased ridership and increased evening support calls increases as we onboard this community-wide.
Thank you, councillor Beatty. I just have a couple of comments on my own. One would be in response to councillor Bureau's comments in medical appointments and whatnot. I mean, we all know when you book a doctor's appointment, you're lucky if you can get one within a month or so. So I mean, you know well in advance that you have those appointments and you have a week in advance to set up rides and whatnot. So we have to put some responsibility on the users. And secondly, I just wondered, under councillor Chorley, pardon me, councillor Beatty's amendment, if she would introduce some sort of metrics? I mean, we're talking $29,000 and like the deputy mayor said, we don't know how many calls we're getting. Well, you know, we're reducing from 9:00 till 10:00 because it's $46 a call. Well, if we got $29,000 and we put some metrics in over the year and if we're only getting 2% or 3% or 5% of the people calling after those hours, it's an awful expensive call center to operate. So I wondered if we could look at some sort of metrics so that, you know, a year down the road, if council does decide to leave it in, that, you know, we have staff take a look at the metrics and say, okay, here it is. We're recommending again and take out or introduce them to the amendment. Mayor Henderson?
Yes, I appreciate, as always, the wonderful deliberations we have on the floor and all issues before, since I've been listening. I appreciate the motion by councillor Beatty, but maybe, councillor Beatty, would you consider just holding the motion as it is today in the committee of the whole, knowing staff will bring back the information, which will help council? And then based on that information, you then next week can put this right back again based on the information because that would answer questions that Deputy Mayor had, you know, councillor Darling's asking. I'm kind of weighing both ways. I just wonder if you would consider that because it still gives you the option next week in regular council to present what's before. So just for your consideration.
Thank you, Mayor Henderson. I hear what you're saying. I'd be happy to wait until next Monday with full disclosure that it will still be the same motion, even if it's one or two calls because I can in good conscience, as a commitment to equitable service delivery, completely abolish service after 5:00 PM where this community operates well beyond that. I even think about my, my work in the social sector. One of the biggest concerns is people in crisis, you know, after 4:00 PM. Where does the service provision come from? So I have to believe that ridership will increase as we onboard this community-wide. So it will save the conversation and to be data-informed. I'm happy to wait till next Monday, but full disclosure, it will still be the same motion. And while I have the microphone to councillor Darling, you make a really good point about metrics. And I'm wondering if Director Wills could comment on what an annual evaluation of on-demand service would look like moving forward and what opportunities future councils would have in budget deliberations to address these micro costs that wrap up into the overall transit service expenses?
Through the chair to councillor Beatty. This is a really good point that, and why specifically we've requested for council to allow us to renegotiate the terms of contract for operations of our transit system because the current model that the model that the, um, contract is based on, if it changes from fixed route, is significantly different, and we're not sure quite yet what will change with the operations. We know that there's a lot of opportunity for cost savings, but we also need to be fair to our provider, but, you know, I mean, the mainly important part here is ensuring that we're getting best value for the actual services that we're providing. So the remainder of this year would be a very good judge of where those costs might end up in order for us to have a more informed budget, um, in the fall, in the, in the future for next year, um, based on what happens this year. And, you know, with the COVID, um, easing up a little, our ridership is definitely, it's rising significantly in the last couple of months, so we really hope that that will inform our, our budgets better in the, for the future, um, for next year's budget as well. So, um, yeah, very good point that, that's what we'll be working on, that's the fallout of this pilot is, is now where do our operating budgets land.
Hey, Counselor, Counselor B, do you understand that you're withdrawing your amendment through this meeting?
Correct.
Okay, Counselor Charlie.
Further to my concern about how the on-demand transit model will work for those citizens who don't have cell phones, has there been any consideration given to establishing, um, at high-use locations, some kind of a order-a-bus platform? Maybe having some kind of an iPad available at Victoria Hall, or at Walmart, or at the mall, at those frequented locations? Is there any way that we can build that into our infrastructure?
Uh, through the chair to Counselor Charlie, we did investigate this at the beginning of the pilot, and were met with a lot of roadblocks and lack of answers from some places that we did, um, uh, consult with. So we do plan to continue to, um, look into those options, and we know that there is a few other municipalities that have been successful at implementing those systems. Um, so we're going to be reaching out to them to see what the costs are associated, um, to have like a dedicated phone line, like there sometimes is for taxis, taxi companies that, um, you know, automatically dial the transit service. It's just that requires phone services and then requires data, uh, data at times, so there is hardware and, and costs associated with that, but we're definitely going to be continuing to look into it for those high-use areas, um, exactly as you said. So that is, that's, that's our next goal to, uh, to look into this year. And also, um, sorry if I may, while I'm, while I'm here, there's a note that I wanted to make about, um, um, some of our, our senior residences and public education, is we were a little bit, um, hindered, I spoke through this pilot, of being able to provide better education to our, um, our retirement agencies, because we weren't able to attend in person and provide any more guidance. So that is another thing that we'll be working on this year, if on-demand stays, is getting into those retirement residences and provide, uh, much better, um, support for their administrative staff, and to have residents attend, um, an info session here and there to understand how the, how the system works for those who haven't previously used the wheels system. Lots of things to continue to work on as this, if this is in fact the way that we go with on-demand.
Thank you, Director Wills. I have one question I forgot to ask, I hate to put you on the spot, but I have had the question before, uh, about someone standing at the bus stop, and the bus pulls up and they go to get on and they can't. Is, is there any way of implementing that service where if the driver says, you know, I've only got one more stop and I can do, can they radio in and do that, or does that throw a kerfuffle into the system?
Um, I think at some points, there is that opportunity, but, um, the bus driver can't do it himself, and typically they're already have their rides booked, and they don't actually have control over where, of how to adjust those next rides, so someone has to go into the system, book it, and then that ride would get programmed back in. So on the fly, yes, they could call in and try, but it's, it's, I don't believe it's very, um, very easy for them to do that. I can defer to Renee, if she's got more input on that.
You can, you can set something up, uh, for pizzas like that. If, you know, someone's sitting at the shelter and the bus comes up and they don't have a ride, they can call into the call center, and we've set up a, a general cober user account where the booking agent will book that, uh, ride, so that person can get right on the bus, and then the next available time, uh, they'll be taken to their destination. So without having to register for the service, those one-offs, um, yeah, so they can be accommodated.
Great, thank you. Does that, uh, that mean the driver, the bus driver actually makes that call?
The bus driver could make that call, uh, or somebody else, uh, phone owner, if they happen to go to a business and say, oh, you know, I, I don't know how to use the bus, I need a call, that individual can call and, uh, and book using, uh, the account homework desk.
Okay, thank you. I guess I raised some more questions, Counselor Charlie.
And just to follow up on those comments, just to be clear, again, that would rely on a call service being available at that particular time?
At the particular time, somebody answering the phone, yes.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Just your, your, um, numbers that you put in there for the, uh, the two buses at the 320 with the total municipal contribution, that came from both the feds and the province, correct? Uh, is that, is that amount still a go? Um, have we received that amount? Are they waiting for us to buy the buses? Can, so if next week, if this is approved, can we go ahead and purchase those buses right away? Where, where is the status of that, that funding?
Director Wills?
Uh, through the chair to the Deputy Mayor, the funding is, uh, is 100% secured. Um, if we went with the 160 for two buses, um, that we could do that, um, immediately, yes. The only caveat and may not be an issue, because we're going through council anyway, is that the approved budget for two new vehicles is lower than that. I believe they were at 120, because we were thinking along the lines of the minibus, so that would be the only change to our actual budget. Um, but knowing that we have the funding for it is, is sort of a wash.
Thank you, Director Wills. Counselor Bureau.
And after we get through the voting on this, we will be taking a five-minute break so we can try to get Counselor Bureau's mic working for the public.
Okay, following up on Counselor Darling questioning about, um, being at the bus stop and the bus pulls up and they can't get on with their booking, but is it, is it not accurate that, uh, say I book a ride and I have kids with me or, or family, and, but I only booked the one ride, they are still allowed on that bus, right? So what would be the difference of that person not being with somebody, because that's a designated stop for somebody that's going there? Or otherwise, why, would the bus be there? So why would they not be allowed just to pay and get on?
I was, uh, through, through the chair to Counselor Bureau, um, it's, oh, it's, the system is based off of the arrival time, and there's a guaranteed, um, like arrival drop-off time. So if someone books a ride, um, it's not necessarily about the pickup time, it's when do you need to be there? If you have to be there at 3 o'clock, you pick the ride that guarantees you deliver time by 3:00 PM. So if the, along the way, the driver picks up four more people, that's going to delay the destination drop-off time, and that's, that's the point of on-demand, is getting people places on time. So that's what changes the route, and it changes the number of stops, and it would change the deliverable for each of those rides that have already been booked. And you are supposed to book for the number of passengers that are riding. So if you have two kids with you, you do have to book for all of them. Anything else to add, Renee?
If it's winter time, or, you know, if there's a person at a shelter and the, the driver needs them, they're obviously going to pick that, uh, rider up and, you know, their next race.
Deputy Mayor.
Just one final question. Oh, yeah, the, um, Director Wills, you mentioned that the buses, um, in your budget were at 120, and now they're at 160. Where's that 80,000 coming from? For two buses, uh, 120,000 versus 160,000, times two is 80,000?
Well, um, through the chair to Counselor, or to Deputy Mayor, um...
Did you, did you mention that the buses were 120 in your budget, and now they're at 160?
Yes, the budget had, I believe it was 120 per vehicle, because they were based off of a minibus. And then if we go with the type B bus, the larger bus, which is, as we come out of this pilot, that is the recommended choice at the time of budget, we did anticipate going to even smaller buses than our current wheels bus, so that's why we had a budgeted low amount. So yes, there would have to be an authorized additional amount to get the larger vehicles this year. Um, now whether that's one to meet our budget, um, and then another next year is another option as well to stay within our current budget, or it's increasing our, um, capital budget for, um, the vehicle, transit vehicle purchases. But knowing that we have the 73% funding is, um, is obviously a, a great benefit to the town. Uh, but you're right, it will be above our, our current capital budget for 2022.
Just to follow up then, um, we're, we're above the budget, and the 73% funding, is there not a ceiling to that? Or, um, because I'm concerned that this motion basically is saying we're going to approve two buses at 160,000, and we don't have the money in this budget to do that. You've just mentioned possibly putting one, uh, you know, into 2023. Um, where do you think the money's going to come from? The 73, there's obviously a ceiling, it's federal and provincial, they just don't have an open-ended grant system where, well, it costs us more, so let's, you know, can you sort of do the numbers for us, please?
Yes, through the chair, uh, to Deputy Mayor, the, the ceiling for this funding, I, I don't have the exact number, but it's like 1.1 million dollars, um, for all of our rolling stock. Um, and that was based off of several years ago, when we did apply for the funding and were expecting to replace our large 30-foot buses that are over half a million dollars each. So the benefit of that clearly going into smaller vehicles, we can purchase more of them, um, within that same amount of, of funding opportunity.
Okay, everybody will beat this one up? So at this point, I'm not seeing any more hands, so I'll call the vote on the motion as it stands, and if so, it'll be amended next week, so call the vote on the motion as it stands. All those in favor? What, Mr. Penny? It's carried.
Uh, we're now going to take a five-minute recess, as so noted, to try and get Counselor Bureau's, uh, mic working for the public.
And thank you, welcome back, everyone. Um, Mr. Mayor, if I may, ask council to indulge us, uh, for a moment on the transit. Um, during the break there, we had a little discussion, and, uh, Director Wills and, uh, Ms. Champagne had a little further information regarding the budget and whatnot, so I think it would be of interest to all of council.
Thank you, through the chair, I just wanted to clarify that, well, I couldn't think of where the budget came from, transit vehicles, and I had forgotten that, of course, we have our vehicle, um, reserve, um, fund, that's where the additional funds would come from. Um, and one follow, further follow-up to, uh, Counselor Burket's, um, suggestion of perhaps contracting out the call center in the future, um, I just, I was just checking to ensure that, and we would have to confirm 100%, but we're fairly positive that it would have to be an employee of Ride Core or PWT to have backend access to the software for the booking, um, the, the software they have access to, um, differently than someone using an app would. So it's a, you know, the front-facing public side of the app, and then there's the backend access that they have, um, you know, knowledge of. So whether you're able to have that knowledge transferred to a, a separate outside contract, I'm not certain, but we are going to be following up with PWT to see if we can get an even further reduced rate for the call center, because originally they had offered us a discounted rate because we have such few calls, and maybe since then, they could give us an even further reduced rate because, based on what our, um, calls have been since the inception of the, of the pilot. So, um, yeah, we will look into whether we can get that reduce, that rate renewed, um, and whether it's even possible to have, uh, us, external contractor do that for us or not.
Thank you, Director Wills. And moving on.